And now we have to be on our best.
Two more minutes.
Six seconds.
Yeah, I thought you were about to tell me that I was off on the clock because I was.
I thought I've thought about it at work before because I hate trying to go through this. That's why I keep my phone up because I can zoom through it faster. I mean, there's one hundred and seven three pages. Not Mr. Hope, did I? Oh, you're almost at a full.
Actually.
It's just a UFO.
Jerry, that Jerry, that's an interesting question of.
From what I understand, you've been appointed to planning commission and you serve a what a three year term? So Johnson assistant firm up on planning.
I believe it is.
Is it?
I have to double check, but.
Also, he's going to be reappointed in January.
That one didn't.
If December.
December, so I I'm go sit in the audience.
But I've heard that you're staying on the planning commission, right, Jerry?
You heard wrong.
I.
Well, I heard it's a vote, so we'll just vote them in.
Perfect, because I heard that he was going to step down from the council, but he would be willing to stay on the planning commission.
I'm I'm holding off starting the meeting.
You've done a great job.
Give me a resolution one way or the other, whether or not Jerry should be up here. If it's just an opinion, then, you know, my opinion.
I'll just abstain from any votes.
But I don't know. I don't know legally if you're if this is really an issue that's coming up.
No, as far as I'm concerned, he's still on the planning commission.
Okay.
Forever.
And legally, if reappointments occur in December.
Right.
And dependent on when his actual appointed term of service was on the planning commission. The earliest would be after what a city council meeting in December.
In Florida.
So that would be when we'd have to appoint him off the board.
That was that was if you appointed yourself three years ago.
I didn't.
But I don't know exactly what day, what year it was. If you appointed yourself a year ago and the council concurred, you'd still be on. There would be no break.
It's too technical.
So in lack lieu of other information, one way or the other, I'm going to start the meeting.
Same time.
Yeah, okay. It's seven oh one. Let's bring the meeting to order.
There it is.
I'll start with the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Here's the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Max Meyer Hall.
Here.
Ms. Hamel.
Here.
I'm Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Murlington.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Right here.
And Mr. Conley is here. We don't have any planning officials, engineering or legal representation here tonight. We do have the city manager and the city clerk. Um, we have some minutes from the regular meeting on October fifth. That's page four of your packet. Need a motion to approve those or a reason to not approve those. Tell me one way or the other, because as you know, I wasn't here. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify with I.
I.
All opposed? Motion carries and that's approved. Tonight's agenda, that's on pages one through three in your packet. A number of items today. Is there anything? Well, one I need a I would need a motion to approve that.
Finally.
Yes.
So I did print out a, I guess, a memorandum that was provided to me by Sky Mint. I got that, I believe, this morning. I don't know if you want to add it to your packets. I mean. I emailed Steve this morning. I'm not sure if anybody had the opportunity to read it.
A little bit.
I provide it to you on paper because I believe Ms. Hendrick is going to try to walk you through each of the changes which are aligned in the memo. I guess for historical sake, you could add it to your agenda, so it's always part of the agenda. I don't know how you want to do it.
Um.
Because this might not come back at the next meeting.
Right.
In which case I would add it to the agenda, but.
Just as supplemental material under the the items that are listed under eight A.
That'd be my recommendation.
Putting in S E, so you're referring to.
Or communications, that way future people realize that you weren't given the opportunity ahead of time. Not that it matters that much.
Communications would be the best spot for.
Correspondence.
Correspondence, okay. So an item.
Eleven eighth.
Eleven A four. Okay. So first I need a motion one way or the other, and then we can proceed with that.
We need to add that to the motion.
Like a motion that would add that in there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the agenda with the addition of the new correspondence. Bring in as A four.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of permi tonight's agenda, please signify with I.
I.
I, as opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have an agenda. Which moves us on to public comments. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the planning commission. Please state your name and address to the record if you would like. And let me amend that slightly in that there's also public hearings tonight, so you may also have time during the public hearing if you'd like to comment, so that's not a sweeping statement. So that being said, if you have any public comments, I'm whatever, this is a great opportunity for you to do so.
Mr. Conley, for what it's worth, we might want to in some way add a provision there that says if you have a item up on the agenda, we'll also give you the opportunity to discuss that time.
Yeah, I feel like I have to explain that every time because of the spoiler language that's in here. And of course, yes, as Mr. Womack said, if you have an item on the agenda, we're going to want to hear from you as well, so. But this is intended generally for whatever public comment you might want to make on whatever subject you might want to make, we don't limit it. As well.
My name is Rose Powell, and I've been given strict orders to let you all know I'm on city council. And welcome, Ashley. I'm I'm sure you're we're you're going to be a great for us. We needed some young blood in here. And I'm going to enjoy working with you.
Thanks.
My my comment actually is, of course, we all know that Thursday is Veterans Day. And not one of the nice things about our city is the mission point used to be formerly Metron is having a presentation for the veterans that live there at Metron, and if anybody from our city would please go and show respects for the veterans that live there and for any veterans in your family or represent our city. I would love to see all there, and it looks like it's going to be quite a big deal. They're going to have guests from Rees Puffer High School, Muskegon Interact Club students, so I don't know what they're going to have some kind of a performance. So I hope to see some folks there and have a wonderful Veterans Day to y'all. It's always kind of hard to say happy Veterans Day because I know there's a lot of sad veterans in the world and we certainly appreciate their service to our country and keeping us free. Thanks, you guys.
Any other public comments either here or on the internet? I didn't want to neglect the people that were on Zoom. You are on Zoom and you can hear me if you if you signify that you would like to speak in the next few seconds, I'll certainly recognize you. Otherwise, we'll move on. Hearing none. We'll move on from public comments and on to item seven, topics of interest, the next part, communication inquiry. Is there any of either that anyone on the bike commission needs to report before we move on? Hearing none. We'll go into item eight, scheduled public hearings. So item eight A is the District Park LLC DBA Sky Mint Marijuana Retailer and Processor at forty one seventy three Seventeen Mile Road. Mr. Womack, could you give a a slight little synopsis of what this is so that if anyone wants to comment on that, they know what they're referring to?
Sure. So Sky Mint is the successor brand to three fifteen marijuana, which is a company that we had previously reviewed. The previous three fifteen was, I believe, expected to go between the tractor supply company and the Dollar General.
Tree.
Dollar.
Oh, tree.
I apologize. But for for reasons totally having nothing to do with three fifteen, that deal did not go forward. Now, the site plan that this board approved, I think, two or three months ago now, which is going to be a small retail space directly in front of the family farm and home business, which is purported to have a Jimmy John's in it. District Park LLC doing business as Sky Mint is proposing to put a retailer and processor in the other half of that building. So the job for the planning commission today is to review that and see if plans meet both the city's zoning requirements and also the special language.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Again, if members of the public would like to comment on this on this issue, they're free to do so. And any if the applicant or the representative would like to speak, you may do so at this time, but you will also be given the opportunity to do so when we start discussing the project, so I'll leave that up. If anyone has anything they'd like to add, feel free to come on up. Or from Zoom, feel free to chime in from Zoom if you'd like to. Hearing nothing. I will close this public hearing. And I guess I need some clarification from Mr. Womack. I know we've done some changing in the in the agenda. Is the intent now with the way we change the format of the agenda that we would go directly into the discussion of the site plans?
Yep. So that's how I have it here. Obviously, every time we try to do something nice, something gets in the way. And so part of the issue is originally the plan was to do public hearings and then immediate review site plans. The problem exists now that we do have a site plan which does not require a public hearing. So this board has taken the stance that we should address everything that has somebody here for first, and then we can address other issues second. So I don't know if you want to attempt to jump around. If you want to go, you know, straight to site plan now, do the other two public hearings and then go, you know. You know, however you want to do it, we'll make sure it's reflected appropriately in the minutes.
Right.
As long as the board, I guess, is okay with it.
But so I know there's another site plan out there, but there's also a site plan preview for this issue as well. That's that's the one that I was referring to.
Yeah, I guess my recommendation is based on how we've proposed the changes to the bylaws that we address the site plan right now.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that I was clear on it before I directed that way because that this issue is up. Let's let's do this issue. So who'd like to present first? It's we have a we had applicant here who I'm assuming would like to speak on this. We have Mr. Womack. I don't have a.
I will allow Ms. Hendrick to go first.
Thank you.
And hopefully she does my job for me because she's going to be responding to my comments.
That's that's kind of what I saw in the back and forth, so I thought this might even be quicker than the way we normally do it, so.
First, I want to say thank you for the banter that I got to hear before we went to an actual public comment that was very enjoyable for the people that weren't that are now listening. And just for the record, this is a very fun commission. Off the subject, yeah, it's Mr. Womack had had insisted we had previously came. There's a couple of different items with this site plan versus the last one. First off, Sky Mint and three fifteen have merged, so it's, you know, kind of complicated, but it's actually been really helpful working with Mr. Womack and Mr. Murray, who's on the Zoom, who is the property owner, just kind of coordinating this. So I'm thankful for your staff that they're making this, you know, good for the community and good for business as well. And and he's really been helpful. So we do have the staff review that was done, and I kind of just went through because there's not a lot of changes that have happened and responded to any concerns that Mr. Womack had. I'll handle those, and if you have any other questions for me, I'll allow you. I'm I'm more than willing to speak about them afterwards. So as we mentioned, Sky Mint, you know, there is a different DBA and a different property owner, same players. We're going to continue. There's some comments addressing who our security person is, and right now we're going to keep it as is. If there's if there's needs, we're going to continue the the open communication between the city to make sure that any changes that happen in structure and staff are communicated so that we can all be on the same page. So that's kind of number one, number two, number three. Number four. Security plan, we have actually added. There were some questions about how many staff we would have for security, and and there was kind of an initial fear with the marijuana industry and specifically maybe not related to product, but related to the amount of cash because it's a cash business, that there would be a lot of theft and that would be a target. We found actually that crime has decreased in areas that have marijuana facilities because of the amount of cameras, staff, and just having an active storefront. So there will be a security guard on site, but it will probably be no more than one. Maybe if there's a situation where we have some scheduled deliveries, we'll make sure to have multiple staff, you know, depending on sales and operations, but there's not going to be a situation where we have, you know, you know, compound setup on next to the Jimmy Johns. So as far as parking and staffing, we don't anticipate that that's going to add any additional parking. All signage, we will handle administratively. We haven't made any exterior modifications to the previously approved site plan, so we won't be changing the facade. We'll make sure that all of the signage, when when it comes, when it finally comes to it, that our sign company pulls all the required permits. I'm. Lighting, same situation. If we change anything, we understand the process and we understand that we'll have to come back for site plan review. There's a couple of small things as far as security glass break detectors. And and we just plan on complying with any of the small items that Mr. Womack. You know, we're going to do exactly what we say in this memo as long as it's in as long as you guys don't change anything. And we'll obviously listen to any of your recommendations for modifications as well. There was a couple administrative things that were mentioned. We resubmitted the outreach plan that addressed COVID and signage. So Mr. Womack had made some comments about just wanting to make sure that we have just clear signage with a manager's name and in a contact of actual person that you can get a hold of. If any of the neighbors have any concerns, we want to do that. We're going to do that, so they'll be posted on the wall, and that is now included in the modified outreach plan that's been submitted with this document. ADA comments are the same. This is a new build, and as I said, Mr. Murray's on on Zoom. Should we have any questions about that? But the site has been approved with ADA accessible building requirements. That's a priority for us. I understand that there's been some HVAC issues in the past with other companies. We don't have any intention of putting in any massive HVAC. Any equipment outside of the facility. That's not needed, and if we if for some reason that comes up again, we'll come back for site plan review to make sure it's appropriate with the ordinance. There's another comment about COVID, because last time that we were doing this, it was on Zoom, and we are in the midst of the of the COVID pandemic, so there was requirements. Those have all been removed from the the plan, and we get back into that situation. We'll in touch with you and hopefully we don't. Um, we did add delivery areas and curbside pickup to the plan. I just took the existing plan and plopped it in there, and that's kind of the design we find with curbside. It's obviously nice to be close to the door, but we don't want it anywhere close to the queuing area for the Jimmy John's, the best practices. It's going to be the best area, I think. Delivery delivery area will happen in the back, and that's been indicated on the plan.
Ms. Hendrick, just one second. Just. This is a black and white picture. Obviously nicer in color, so if you can't tell where it's at.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious.
Of course, for for me. I have a color copy if anyone.
Must be nice.
I own a laser printer.
I thought the chair was just special.
Yes. On the back here, it shows the delivery area now, and that would be a shared location for the store and the Jimmy John's, or how would that be separated?
Um, I don't exactly know where the Jimmy John's delivery is, but we will most certainly coordinate with them. I think that's the most appropriate space to keep out of the way of customers, and I I'd have to talk to Jimmy John's.
That was their space.
Okay.
That was their space.
Yeah, and I.
We approved.
Yeah.
Okay. And I assume like we would just coordinate with them as far as operations. We usually like to coordinate and make sure that we're not playing on top of each other in condo situations like this in a commercial area. We'll coordinate. We have to coordinate with security and with our secure transporter as well. Anyway, so we'll make sure that there's not issues, and I think most deliveries are coming not at peak hours for either of the stores anyway, so I don't imagine we're going to run into major traffic jams. But if we do, we're going to win. You guys set me up to make.
I appreciate.
As far as parking, there was some current concern. So actually, in reviewing this, I kept getting like I'm doing all this stuff with Jimmy John's, so I ended up just going to Jimmy John's for lunch and sitting around ordering and watching kind of Jimmy John's way of functioning and knowing three fifteen and Sky Mint. These are not, these aren't Culvers where you're making food and sitting around for you know, twenty five minutes in a queue line while you wait for your food, and it's the same business model when it comes to these marijuana facilities to the to our business model as far as getting people in and out. We're not sitting around. This isn't a consumption lounge, so it's not like Starbucks where you might have customers come in and spend, you know, thirty to three hours in a parking area, taking up parking spaces and have people coming through drive-throughs at crazy times. When I sat in the line at Jimmy John's on Leonard, which is a much higher traffic area, it was lunchtime. I watched, I just counted them. I can't remember now. Thirteen cars came through in roughly fifteen minutes, and they were in, and one of them was mine. So and there was no cars in the parking lot, I think, just both of these models, their staff. There's not going to be massive amounts of cars that that are associated with either of these businesses that stay in those spots. And then later I did the same thing in Lowell, too. I was just looking at a parking lot for Jimmy John's at dinnertime. I did not eat this time, but just kind of looking at parking requirements. There was about six staff members in that store, and you can see there's absolutely no there's six staff members I could see through the window just because it was dark out and the lights were on, and I could see the staff there. I assume that maybe they have a parking agreement with the parking. There was a big parking lot next door, but there was absolutely no cars in the parking lot, so they're either just doing it or it's via parking agreement, but they still at that store, they had thirteen parking spaces during dinnertime, and there was no cars in the parking lot, so. I I understand, I believe Mr. Womack said that you guys are reviewing your parking standards and that you have, you know, it's within your purview to lower the parking calculation if you feel that it's appropriate. I feel that there's some benefit to, you know, less previous service and less development over over parking and having something that you don't need, so I feel it's appropriate. I will leave it up to you to make the determination. I did also coordinate with the code compliance and reach out to the couple of the neighbors, left some messages, and I haven't heard back yet. So if we feel that a parking agreement is appropriate, I'll work to continue reaching out to those neighbors, but I feel like just reviewing this and doing some site analysis, both uses are complimentary, and I don't think you're going to have a parking problem here. I think it would be more beneficial for your municipality to maybe cut down on parking versus over parking and over developing. The additional documents that are included are just the modified outreach plan mentioned in the memo and the customer plan. Removing any comment about COVID. That's that's kind of my spiel, so if you guys have any questions for me.
The logo on the building, because I was looking at the website, and so is it just the name Sky Mint? There's no little there's not going to be any type of.
Before I, before you continue that comment.
Okay.
Keep in mind that the US Supreme Court has ruled that the city cannot judge a sign based on its content. So regardless of whether it has little pink ponies or anything else that we may or may not like, we can't judge it based on that. The business will be judged on that. The city can only indicate where the signage can go, how big the signage can be, whether it can be lit up, things of that nature.
But I thought we had already discussed on signage for these stores, certain aspects were not going to be shown.
Can't legally do that.
Not now.
I've told people I don't like their signs in private conversations, but I can't rule and we can't require anything regarding signage, not based on content. But the point is well taken. Marijuana businesses know what we do and don't like. For the most part, they've been very good about it.
Well, and that that's why I was just double checking. That's all I was asking. That it was just a word. So yeah, so maybe don't answer, because then we don't want to have a situation where we're.
Thank you.
I have drove by two of the Sky Mint stores, and the ones I drove by just say Sky Mint, just simple signage, you know.
That's what I've seen is just a billboard.
Well, the one I seen, I like the one up in New Egg was just like the block loud, little letters on the building that spell all Sky Mint, and there's nothing else to it.
And sure. What is your thoughts, the company's thoughts on the mural? Do we know what they're thinking, talking about the mural on the front of the building?
Yes, I didn't address that. So so usually there's there's a conflicting, and as a planner, I agree with this. There's a conflicting rules between the Marijuana Regulatory Agency at the state level and municipalities desire to have an an open facing pedestrian friendly street fund. So the way that we usually handle this, and since it's a white box building and the windows are already there, it works out appropriately, is you cannot have products showing from a public street. So the desire there is to put something that's appealing and adds some facade articulation to your site, but still keeps us within the requirements of the MRA. So we have a window and then about, you know, three feet back, two, three feet back, you'd have the mural. And then, you know, sometimes on sides, and I'm not the operation person, but in my experience of seeing it, you may have shirts over here or hats or some kind of swag over here, so that any product that's displayed within within the bud room would be concealed by that mural, which, like I said, adds the facade, but then still meets the requirements of all the law.
Oh. I I thought it was going to be like a vinyl on the window. That's what I thought it was going to be a vinyl like. And that way it would be covering the window. You could see it from the outside, but you couldn't see in, so that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But it's an actual.
Okay, see end alone. Still transparent windows.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Rollback, it's your show. There's a lot of things that looks like that you had in your correspondent and your in your report that had been answered. So my biggest curiosity is what remains?
Yeah, and so I appreciate Ms. Hendrick's work on this. She's been easy to work with on this project and the previous projects, so I appreciate that about her. You're right, for the most part, just about everything has been addressed. Of course, it wouldn't be me if I didn't get into the weeds on, you know, what our law actually says. So, you know, this board is working on the parking standards, and in time passed, we have used the release mechanism within our ordinance to allow lesser requirements. And as Ms. Hendrick has indicated, Ms. Hendrick is a professional planner, I believe serves on a planning commission, right?
Not.
Or used to used to used to serve on a planning commission. Is that we don't want too many parking spaces either. The city's primary concern in this situation is we don't want people going to this store or the Jimmy John's and parking in the McDonald's parking lot or the family farm and home parking lot. I agree, just based on personal experience, because unlike Ms. Hendrick, every time I do go to the Jimmy John's, I do eat there. They're never that busy. People go through. People go through drive-through and then they leave. So I'm really not that concerned about it, but what I'm concerned about is what our law says. And one question I did have from Ms. Hendrick is, I think this is now the second or third time I've seen twenty-four hundred square feet for the proposed retail area. But my calculation comes out at thirty-three hundred square feet. And my calculations require sixteen point six parking spaces, which it rounded up to seventeen plus two for the processing staff requiring nineteen parking spaces. But, you know, again, getting into the wood weeds on this, when we approved the Jimmy John's site plan. Required them to have thirty-seven parking spaces. Now, part of that discussion, as I recall it, was that we were proposing that Jimmy John's would have twenty or twenty-two parking spaces. The remainder would be left over for whoever the other tenant wants. However, in reviewing the minutes from that meeting. There actually is no requirement from this board that twenty or twenty-two parking spaces be reserved for the Jimmy John's. The only requirement listed in the minutes was that whatever the new use was going to be. Had to meet the requirements under the thirty-seven parking spaces. So if that's what this board intended. Then the difference between what Ms. Hendrick has listed here is fourteen and what I've calculated is seventeen doesn't really matter. And I guess it kind of comes down to what whether this board believes that these are two compatible uses. And whether the thirty-seven parking spaces is sufficient for the two types of uses.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe that my my interpretation of what we came up with was that. Or that entire building. That we were okay with thirty-seven. Spaces. And if and if mo- if most other businesses that would have come into that space wouldn't even be before us. Because it wouldn't be like a marijuana retail, it has additional requirements. So we had already kind of made that decision in the planning mission that two businesses could coexist with thirty-seven spaces.
That's the way I feel too.
Yeah.
So that it's a special case here because we know what the we we made that decision before based upon our guess of what the other thing would be. But we know what this is going to be now because they've come before us. So to me, the question is, does it's, do we still feel the same way now that literally we're getting a free at bat at it? Because otherwise we wouldn't, it would just be what it is based upon our prior discussion. Prior prior decision.
Well, the prior discussion also stated that the other business would be a walk-in drive-up, almost like a drive-through too.
I don't think we. Going to allow another drive-through.
They thought that it might be a phone store.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Drive-up business like that now, you know, this is totally, the dynamics of that site plan has totally changed. My opinion.
Right, so the question is, does, to me, we said thirty-seven spaces. Were fine for two businesses and in most situations, we'd have to live with that because that's any other business could have came in there. In this situation, do we believe that it's still fine? Way I would for the question.
I drive, you know, drive downtown during the day and. Driving and by other types of businesses like this. I don't see that we have a problem, especially in like Main Street where it's completely deadlocked for that type of business. I think the thirty-seven is just fine. And even. Like Mr. Hall said, even if it was a cell phone store, I think it would have the same amount of traffic. Because. It's going to be mostly, if they park, go in, get out, leave.
Yeah, and I feel the same way. I mean, like when we first was this two months ago and we went over this, we were thinking phone store. I mean, truthfully, I mean, the phone stores, people are in there longer than they're going to be in here. They're going in here, they're buying their product and they're out. When you're in a phone store, you're in there for twenty minutes to forty-five minutes. I don't see a problem with the parking here at all.
Can I ask if the majority of the people coming to Sky Mint, are they doing curbside? Are they going inside?
I can't speak for that because I'm I'm not in operations and I wasn't prepared for that question, but usually it's about twenty eighty. And it's kind of been in fluctuation because obviously with COVID, it was a hundred percent and a lot of stores.
Twenty percent side, like eighty percent inside?
Yep.
Okay, I was just curious what.
And that's.
How many cars would we expect to standing there and how long, right? Curbside, you what you're there for five minutes, maybe?
Yeah.
And inside, maybe half an hour, twenty minutes, I don't know.
Not even a half an hour, I'd say eight to twelve, eight to twelve minutes. Well, inside, get you in, get you out.
I was just curious about what that flow would be like there if it was people sitting there for a while or moving in and out quickly, so.
Yeah, they.
All right.
Go back, it's just quick.
I think that would help us. Address that parking if they're there for a long time, right? And you got a big queue of people, that would be an issue, but if we're not dealing with that, I don't think that's going to be an issue then. Alright, thanks.
Mr. Ho, if I could address that for a sec. So there is a three fifteen store down on Plainfield Road, which just happens to be across the street from Harbor Freight, which.
Yeah.
My Sunday.
Used to be where my vet used to be.
So every time I go past there, I just take notice of it because I happen to know it's there. And I've counted, they have sixteen parking spaces there with four ADA spots. I've never seen them even half full.
Yeah.
We've got two or three spots which are kind of right up front where they do the curbside delivery, those are usually full.
Yeah.
And a back a back parking lot, which has the majority of their parking, which is eight or ten spaces. I never see anybody parked there.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be an issue, but if this pesky law, we got to.
Yeah, me neither, that's why I was trying to, you know, address that the issue would be congestion, right? That that's not an issue at the stores, but we also got to think about future use too. Like we discussed when we put this property in, so. If you guys ever move out of that space and somebody else moves in, that is a phone store, is that going to be fine for future use too?
Well, so we do have. A thing our zoning ordinance called the change of use. And when they change the use of a building, we can readdress parking requirements.
Okay.
With for future use.
Good to know, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe for most of these type of businesses that came in, they usually were talking ten an hour, like ten customers an hour. Now, I don't know about this company in particular, but I do know this type of business, seeing all these, that's what we've pretty much heard from each one of them. Is they've been like, well, it's about ten customers an hour. So I think that this parking is just fine for that. Because Jimmy John's won't even open until eleven, I believe. So I I think it'll be.
I was just going to say that the buildings with the same property manager, right? So they'd have to coordinate the two businesses anyways, so. Behave them not to bring in a second person. Fighting over parking.
The other, and I we're kind of in the middle of the process here, is any other comments on the parking aspect, so we can.
That's the only other comment I'd have is, you know, if this board wants to allow it, it's fine. You still have my, what I think is a very valid interpretation of our ordinances, which means there's still missing three or four parking spaces. Which this board could use to require applicants to do one of several options to address the parking situation for the future. I've listed them in your notes here. It could, you could require that they install a bicycle rack on property for people who might come on a bicycle versus a car. You could require them to identify off-site parking for their employees or customers for the future. And seek and obtain permission, which is something Ms. Hendrick related to. They could provide a written agreement from surrounding property owners. Or you could require that they install an electric car charging station. Which doesn't specifically solve the number of parking spaces issues. I I think it would show their commitment towards a site. Versus going off and getting, you know, a written agreement from somebody else. So tho- those are some options if you wanted to exercise them and if you believe they fall below the minimum parking requirements.
Love the concept of building infrastructure, don't get me wrong. But as far as the electric car thing, but it seems counterintuitive. There's a, we're we're now saying, come park here and take a parking spot while you're driving.
I think you're going to attract other cars to park there. In the whole written agreement thing, we've already been down this road with the last applicant. They won't even return his calls. I mean, family farm and home won't even.
Right.
Return their calls.
That's a muted issue.
Well, that's also not our problem.
That can be something you can put onto the applicant to do.
Yeah.
And come with.
I do like the bike rack idea, though.
I could, I could certainly get behind a bike rack.
Yeah, I like that.
Because that would encourage people to come in using other methods that would make a car go away.
Would that be on the sidewalk then, or where would the bike rack go?
As long as there's a place for it to be that's that's safe and. I think between the applicant and the zoning administrator here.
As long as it doesn't take up a parking spot.
If we don't have a.
So we would just leave it to the applicant to find a safe location for it and the zoning administrator would approve of that.
Perfect. I'm good with that.
Yes, sir. I saw a nod over there, is that something that sounds good?
Okay.
We should get it in the record.
The applicant is okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, anything else, Mr. Womack, that we should be looking at that the city still has?
No, the parking issue was the major concern. I I have provided a sample motion, it's not as good as a Tim Johnson motion, but I have tried.
I'm going to throw the sample motion to someone who has a pen. Because I, it's hard to mark these up to get these right and I left my pen somewhere else.
Like we'll give.
Look at that.
Never write it.
A pen that looked just like this. No, it's not the same. Because I want to, because I don't think that everything that's in a sample motion still applies.
Yeah, that's what I was looking to too, is trying to look through this and that at the same time to make sure we got all the compliance.
And that is.
Do you have that color version?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I borrow that?
Go ahead.
Kind of look at the security plan over there. Let's see the. Camera overlay.
And thank you for the pen, Mr. Womack. If you have, based on what you've heard us discuss, I. I'm guessing that some of the things you put in your sample motion are now moot, but they may not be. So if you could help me understand if there's.
Also, the simplest answer is I've addressed a number of concerns based on what they've submitted, seeking clarification. So for example, they've indicated that they're going to install this HVAC system. Now, most marijuana businesses have their HVAC system on the inside. But as Ms. Hendrick indicated, we do have at least one who added a surprise HVAC system. Which did not meet our screening requirements. So if they were to provide that. Then they'd be required to meet our screening requirements. Probably the easiest way to address that would be to incorporate Sky Mint's response. Ate it, whatever the date of this response. November eight twenty-one into their site plan. That later on, if they decided to do the HVAC system, we could go back and say, hey, on your November eighth thing, they said they, you know, follow the rules, so. So I guess approve it and incorporate that into their site plan.
Okay, so. I'm going through the sample motion just to make sure that I'm not. So. Said revise the site plan as applied with apartments eight, nine, and twelve. So eight, nine, and twelve were the delivery plan, we're good with the delivery plan the way.
Yeah.
It's presented, outreach is is fine according to what Ms. Womack is telling me here. And then. They scratched out the the S, the number twelve already, so that would be covered by their. By this. Memo that they gave us. As well as two. As well as three, as well as four. We need to make a determination regarding five, we need to put that into that.
Parking is sufficient.
The parking is sufficient.
Yes.
And that we, the bike rack.
Yeah, yes, yes, you are correct.
So that would be.
Most of the stuff, yeah.
That would be. That would be B. So so basically five, we would do five B.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Mr.?
But you're going to have to add language in about requiring a bike.
With the bike rack, yes. So you guys, you gave us an A, B, C, and D, and I just wanted to make sure it looked like they were exclusive of each of of each other, and I think.
Generally speaking, yes, so B would be appropriate.
Okay. And then six through ten is the boilerplate for everything, right? That doesn't change.
Yes.
So. Someone else like to make this, or I can make it and someone else can second it?
Like you already got it.
Go for it, alright. So. Make a motion to approve the request from the District Park LLC DBA Sky Mint. I mint, I'm sorry for my accent. For a special land use permit to establish marijuana retail and processor establishment on property located at forty-one seventy-three Seventeen Mile Road. The. The remainder of this paragraph would be as in Mr. Womack's sample motion. Items. We no longer need, I actually. Proble is granted to the following conditions. One is that we'll be entering the. Conditions as illustrated in the memo presented on eleven or November eighth twenty twenty-one from Sky Mint. This was dated. Was dated on. And that we would also require. So items one through four have been addressed by that on his memo. Item five, we will accept the zoning emitter, zoning administrator's calculation and allow applicant to use the parting parking lot as is. Despite being below minimum required parking with the condition that they will add a bike rack. And the rest of this, item six through ten, will accept, we, I would present that as is for the motion.
So that's why I brought that motion.
One, so so one through four are addressed in.
On the report.
I don't know the best way to say that. I'm sorry. Um, is. No. Okay, well, let me stop just a moment. What were you going to say?
It doesn't matter, but for safety sake, I would just say one through four as part of the motion, even though they've been already addressed.
Okay. Then let me amend my motion. We will keep items one through four. And. Don't need anything, I guess.
Really, your motion could have been items one through ten and item five is B plus a bike rack.
Okay.
There it is.
You let me start from the beginning or or do you or you have?
For here to.
Have it as presented.
More time.
One through four. And then you've selected item five B. And require that they add a bike rack.
Yes. Everything else is that is.
I will second.
We need to make sure.
I will second those. One through four has been compliance with the November.
So it's.
Eight, right, because we need to, do we need to add that to one through four, because it is November eighth memo.
Believe that.
Addresses one through four.
Leave those part of the motion.
Okay, I didn't hear what you're.
Well, that's, that's, that's where.
That's why I didn't hear you say it, that's why I made sure that was captured in there, because I think that's important. That's why that we get the changes in one through four.
So so that's where I was stumbling because I I know that we're wanting to hit all of these ten. But I also wanted to include that we're accepting.
I thought you say that you were incorporating that memo into the.
Yes, he did, I just didn't hear.
I did say that, but I'm I'm also, I'm also giving a very poor motion to the city clerk. So I would like to clear that up. Through the, through any amendments we have to make at this point so that we're on the same page.
Right, I do have that you wanted to enter the conditions from memo eleven eight twenty-one. Then you went on to say other things. So I wasn't certain if you wanted items one through four also listed.
And and yes, I do based upon the what Mr. Womack told me in the.
Oh, in your memo, I'm just going to enter that or in your motion, I'll enter in the conditions memo, entering those conditions right before item number one.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't see anything.
So and and again, I'm super embarrassed because there's a planner in the audience. Does everybody on up here, does everyone get what I meant to say?
Yeah.
Do you feel like, you feel like you followed the mo, followed the motion before?
Yes.
All right. All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, please sign above eye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Be it what it meant.
Really?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Hey, so, um, this takes us to item B, eight B. This is in page one twenty-seven of your, your substantial packet commissioners. If you intend to go look at that, um, page one twenty-seven. And we, I know that we have been talking about industrial building facades and that we've got additional memo from, from Mr. Womack on this. So I know we also have to have a public hearing, which is why this is in this spot. So, let me open up the public hearings first and give people the opportunity to speak on that. And then I may be asking Mr. Womack for some additional input on this after the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on our sample industrial building facade requirements ordinance, here's your opportunity to do so. I don't believe it is.
So she's on the eighty-eight North Main project. What we're talking about right now is a proposed ordinance change. Now, the proposed ordinance change kind of does address what you'd like to do. So you're welcome to speak on it, but it's not directly related to your project.
And now my interpretation is this was on industrial buildings.
So even though we're calling it the industrial building facades, we do change some minor language regarding commercial buildings as well. Because really the ordinance is called the non-residential design requirements.
Okay. Well, absolutely. In no way do I want to negate your ability to speak on this. However, you are on the agenda later if you'd want to speak more directly towards it at that time. I'll leave that up to you. Absolutely. Okay, any other?
If I could just comment. So this was put on for a public hearing in anticipation of potentially proposing this to the City Council for passage as an ordinance. But in reviewing the eighty-eight North Main project and some other issues that kind of came up, I, I wanted to take a whack at it. I just, I didn't have as much time as I would have liked to of this month. So I guess what I'm saying is I presented you a memo kind of detailing some of my ongoing issues. And at this point, you can hold a public hearing. And then I'd like to come back with some additional language at the next meeting, and we can address it more in depth at that time. And then you guys can decide at that time whether the ordinance is ready for the City Council or not. That's what I would hope.
So let me, let me open the public hearing first, because I didn't actually do that. So let's open the public hearing. So officially, we've had it. If anyone wants to speak on it.
Does anybody from the internet want to speak on this race?
No, thank you.
Seeing none here in the, in the chambers, I will now close the public hearing. Now, my question then, Mr. Womack, is if we continue to work on this, and I saw your memo earlier and I could concur, we should probably continue to work on this before we put anything out there. You mean, there's some very good points in that memo. Will we have to have another public hearing for that language?
I don't think we're legally required to have another public hearing. It's always best practice. But, you know, the, the point of the public hearing is to put the public on notice that we're addressing this. But we're not opposed to having additional public hearings in the future either, especially if we make substantial changes from what we're presenting at this time.
Is there anything more that you'd like to, from us, or actually from, I, let me throw this to a fine commissioner if he has a question?
Did have a question for you. You had vinyl slash plastic siding in here as like building exterior materials. When I was looking that up, I know that vinyl siding is made one way, plastic is made another. Do we really want to keep plastic on there? I'm.
Well, and so this is where we get the very complicated nature of doing what we're doing. Plastic is all sorts of things. I'm not a chemical engineer, but I bet you there's a million different types of plastics. I'm certain that vinyl siding is one type of plastic and PVC is a different type of plastic. Do we want PVC siding? Probably not. But do you want me to list ten thousand types of plastics that are permitted or not permitted? Really, part of the issue is we had mischiganja, put together these plastic rocks on the side of their buildings. Horrible. But if you walk up down Main Street, you're gonna see there are multiple buildings on Main Street that already have vinyl siding. They don't look great. They also look horrible. So how do you differentiate between plastic rocks and vinyl siding?
The, the only thing that I was thinking about when I read this was like the plastic sheet tan that you put on top of greenhouses. That's the type of stuff that I was thinking, like, that's what scares me.
Well, and so that's one of the reasons why we were addressing the differences between commercial buildings and industrial buildings. Because it's my understanding that this board is okay with industrial buildings have more of a prefabricated steel panel versus a commercial building having that type of. That's, you know, one of the reasons that not only are we talking about in the ordinance proposal, but it's also something that the applicant from eighty-eight North Main is talking about today as well. But this is why it's in front of you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
This sounds to me like this is going to be a very lengthy process. Once we start getting into.
Possibly.
Moving away from the, the material into the style of the material.
Yep, that's, that's a potential downside. I think what I'd like to do is take a look at some more of, I, I guess, other Michigan communities and see how they address it. Because this board and the City Council have both shown a very strong pro-business bent in the time I've been here, and it's great. It's great for the community. But there is a point where we no longer have to say, you know what, we'll allow you to put up this cheap material if it's cut in a half-moon shape. I don't think that something we're obligated to do, when we could just say, you know what, no, you can't do that material, because it's cheap. And it doesn't matter how you cut it, it still looks cheap. Or bad, or whatever other word you want to use. But I'm at least going through the exercise of saying, hey, look, there are some things that might look okay if it's done the right way. But you're right, this is going to be potentially a very long exercise with no ending point.
It's, that was my concern, that, that by the time we get to the end of this, styles will change. We'll be looking at a whole other group of things. But I'm, I'm, I'm being facetious, but not completely, because there, there, there are so many new and modern ways of presenting buildings in a pleasing and aesthetic way that I never would have considered ten years ago. Because there's new materials on the market. There's all kinds of new options out there. So I, I guess my greater question is, is this, is this a deeper dive than what we've been doing? Or is this something that you think that we can do in a few meetings and get to the bottom of it?
I think it's more like, maybe this is just how I work. We had a, a good ordinance. And while reviewing the ordinance, I did some more research. In my new research led me to question the good ordinance. I don't know if we're gonna change it. I don't know if we're gonna incorporate all this stuff, but I'm just asking for at least one more month. Do some additional research to see, is there something good here? If not, you know, then I won't bring it back. If there is something and it's workable and there's a way to incorporate it, I'll present it to you, and then we can discuss it. But for the time being, I just ask that you table us in the next one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is our ultimate goal here is just to make the town aesthetically pleasing with the material that's going to be pulled up, so I don't have the concern with, with the plastic.
Durable. That's a part of it, yes. Not the more, part of it, that is a significant part of it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we understand, I understand the objective of what we're trying to accomplish with this. Aesthetics, durability, we want our town to look good.
Yeah, well, so I only take issue with the, we're, we're aesthetics, because aesthetics to me means looking at that individual building in a vacuum. We're also looking at the aesthetics of the town as a whole. And you can't have brick building, brick building, brick building, and then a building made of straw. It just would look out of place. So there is some, you know, greater purpose to what we're looking at here.
And, and as, you know, many communities have planning guidelines, they have style guidelines about what they allow, what they don't. Have you ever been to Gaylord? Not that that's a great example now, it's pretty, it's pretty dated, but yeah, Arbor Springs, that there's.
Yeah.
The question is, how deep do we want to get into this? Because once you start going into what you would like everything to look like, and we've made attempts on some of that in the past.
Yeah, we have a P U D for Main Street anyway on what's allowed and what isn't.
Well, we sort of thought we did, but then it never got voted in, or it didn't get voted in, or it's very confusing on that one. So, um, but the point is, this could be a huge thing we dive into with lots of judgment calls.
I think it's a good thing to dive into, just it's gonna take time.
Exactly. So I wanted to make sure that we were all in the same boat on that, versus are we just going to make some quicker decisions on lesser lofty goals? That, I think that's a thing that we need to consider one way or the other, but definitely we need at least a month.
Yeah, and the downside of it is. Okay, so we, we could take this dive into, okay, if you have it board and batten versus this or that of this type material. That's a benefit to the businesses, because it gives them more options of the types of materials and the types of styles they can use. On the other hand, the downside of it is you say, okay, you know what, you just can't have plastic here. Now you eliminate, you know, all these plastic things, which the majority look bad. But now you're saying to the business, I'm sorry, we're taking away that choice from you. It's, this is all very complicated. You can't give everybody everything that they want, but to a certain extent, you're going to be the bad guy.
Okay.
You know, the heavy vinyl.
Sorry.
Oh, well, I did like the suggestion of seeing what other cities are doing, and we're talking about that, and if we need a motion to table, then.
Why don't we have motion on, on here at all at the moment, do we? So we, I mean, we, we don't, this is just a public hearing that we're having discussion afterwards. We don't really need to.
Close. Yeah, I mean, this kind of discussion, I don't remember, is, is there in your, the rest of your agenda? No, it doesn't appear to be anywhere else in your agenda.
This is just a bonus discussion we're having after a public.
I appreciate Mr. McGrath, and you were in the right line of thought, but it doesn't appear to be necessary, no.
Okay, well.
I was just pointing out that he had a question, but I do just think that we should make it maybe less specific. Because you also want the businesses to be able to have like creative license and to not feel so constricted. And it's impossible to.
Yes.
Relate every single scenario. So I think doing the things that we really don't want to see and then doing discussionary, I guess, on the rest of it, but.
I'll bring it back in a month. Come back in a month, and, and, and you've, you've heard some of our concerns and some of our thoughts, and we'll see how much closer we can get next month.
Thank you.
And we can move this on, so it's already an hour or two in. So item C on the plate, or on the public hearing. And this is an ordinance to amend chapter forty, article one, section forty-five. And I really don't want to read all the rest of this, but it's of the code entitled Marijuana Establishment and Facilities, the court order says, the city of Cedar Springs. Mr. Womack, can you explain to us what this is briefly, so we can get, so, and then before we open up the public hearing?
Sure. So there are three marijuana laws in the state of Michigan. There's a twenty sixteen law, twenty eighteen law, and then the two thousand eight law. The city has already decided not to allow marijuana under the twenty sixteen law. We do allow marijuana under the twenty eighteen law, but we don't have a law regarding the two thousand eight law. Now, the two thousand eight law was just adjudicated in the court system in late twenty twenty, which now gives cities the authority to make these types of laws at the local level. So we appreciate that. It took them twelve years. So the City Council has kind of gone back and forth on this. Essentially, what we're doing is we're saying under the medical marijuana caregiver ordinance law statute of two thousand eight, we will allow that in single-family residential and industrial buildings. Now, single-family residential, not because we want to, but that's because basically what the court decided. Industrial, because I think the City Council's saying, you know what, if you've got an industrial building and you want to make a little side cash and, you know, creates medicine for people, we don't care about that. The city's benefiting by getting registration, contact information, and probably fifty bucks. But also, more importantly, the authority to require certain things like odor control. So what you guys have here in front of you, this is similar to the twenty eighteen law. We've got a regulatory ordinance which addresses the licensing side of it, and this, the zoning ordinance, which addresses the zoning side of it. So it's pretty straightforward. There's actually not a tongue we could do with it. It's what we could do. I guess I would ask that you make a motion to recommend this to the City Council.
Okay, so let me open up the public hearing on that. If anyone, if anyone would like to speak on this medical marijuana caregiver zoning ordinance, this is your opportunity to do so. Okay.
Four minutes.
Rose E. Powell, and I am a member of the Cedar Springs City Council. I just, it would just be mind-boggling for me to be next to a home that is a caregiver, and they've got all these plants, and it stinks. And I especially recommend that we would not want the neighborhood to smell like a big pot farm. So I'm glad that we're introducing some way to protect the neighborhoods from smelling like that. So, thanks.
Any other public comment? I'll close the hearing, close the public hearing, and then we have on our agenda a motion to recommend this.
I'd make the motion to recommend the medical marijuana caregiver zoning ordinance to the City Council.
Any discussion?
I just had a question for mine. Um, when it talks about, I just want to make sure this is the right word. When it talks about they're not permitted in, in any accessory structure or accessory building as part of home operation, is that the correct word, accessory?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two types of buildings that you can put on your property, the primary structure and accessory structure.
Okay.
Primary would be your house.
Right.
Or the industrial building. An accessory structure would be a shed or a garage. And part of the reason that it's written that way is sheds and garages can be as close as three feet to your property line. Whereas a single-family residential, you know, R one district, the minimum distance would be ten feet to the property line, thirty to the front line, thirty to the rear line. So it's really just introducing significantly higher setback requirements. Also, if you're living in a single-family home, you got to take up some of the space of living there to compete with the space of growing marijuana in there. Now, under, I could go for days on this, but under the ordinance, you can grow up to seventy-two plants, because that's what the state law says. I don't think you can actually fit seventy-two plants on a single-family home. But, you know, it was written specifically for these types of reasons.
Yeah, the, the only, the only thing I was asking, I didn't know if that was an accessory building or a secondary building. That was it. So that's why I was just making sure.
That's how it was under ordinance, and that's what I just wanted to double check.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, two years of dealing with this, I could talk about marijuana law all day.
All in favor of the motion, please signify with aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is site plan reviews. Hey, item nine is site plan reviews, and item nine A is a zoning application for eighty eight North Main. So it looks like we have an applicant here. Thank you, and you, I see on my agenda that there's a PowerPoint presentation, is that what you wanted to do, or?
So the, yeah, so the PowerPoint's just in your packet.
Okay.
Age one thirty four. One thirty five.
Thirty five, thirty five. We can, but they have it in front of them already.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's, yeah, I don't have a preference when we're the other.
I'm looking.
On one seventy four.
One thirty five.
One third, one thirty five, it might make it easier for her to.
Yeah, I'm giving you the, I'm gonna give.
There you go.
I'm giving, I'm giving you the floor to decide how you would like to present to us, and if that's the way that works for you and we can make the technology work, let's do that.
So first, just to give you a background, my husband couldn't be here tonight, but we have been in business in Rockford. We do own one North Main Street. If anybody's familiar, Rockford is one on the corner with all windows.
Okay, is this too?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little better.
Okay, so we own Rockford for eight years, and then we also have a building in Lowell. So I guess my point is that we have done this before. We keep our properties very well maintained, and we want to make the community better. We don't want to have an eyesore, and that's what we'd like to fix. So the first picture is, I'm sure you all have seen that, the building across from the brewery. So we have already taken down the she had this kind of half-made awning, so we took that down, that was a hazard, then we have. Let me get it in front of me. So we took that down and we're, we painted the front, there's building issues in the back, in the side. And if you scroll down, my husband and we have already fixed the garage area. Now, I'm sorry, but I can't remember his name, but it's Len, do you know Len who owns the other two buildings? I don't know his last name.
Len Allington.
Okay. Alright, so he is going to put, he said for us to leave this, the siding up here or the plastic, because he's going to put a garage right next to it. So that's why that isn't finished, if you go down.
Like one more dollar.
That one, yeah, so normally we would have finished that off, but he said he was going to do that, and I, I thought it was going to be before the snow flies, but we haven't seen any progress.
I'm pretty sure under the IPMC, that would not be permitted as well. So you might be required to do that.
Okay, and we are fine with that, but we, we were trying to be good neighbors there and kind of work with him.
I'm just telling you, the code enforcement officer might tell you under the IPMC.
We got to get that done, absolutely. So I guess my other point is, so this is the new facade up front. We are working with Len, apparently the old owner had that white post there, apparently that's his, and she had already painted it. So we just put a base primer on there for him. What we would like to do on the side of the building. This brick side has been there kind of an eyesore for a long time. We did get the Rockford inspections to go by, and he said it is cosmetic, it is not part of the structure that's a problem. The problem is, when we bought the, when we bought the building, the realtor, John Stout, said he had an estimate for forty thousand to fix the, all of the brick. No problem, we can do that. Well, now, that estimate is nowhere to be found. We have estimates from seventy five thousand to four hundred thousand. So that's not doable, and I think that's why this has been an eyesore for so long. It is just, it's not possible or reasonable to put that much money into this building. What we are, do Pete said he dropped by the sample of the, do we have it? So what we found is this material has, we got the the company to install it was recommended from the manufacturer, they've been doing this a long time. It covers and it, it will the water won't get in, and it'll, it won't dent with hail, it won't, that was what I was prob, what I was worried about. If you look at, can you go down a few? If you look at the backside down there for, this is the back of Cedars, the brewery. All of that is vinyl, and then the side is vinyl, and it looks gorgeous. You know, we're, we are wanting to improve the building. And I think we can get there with a nice vinyl like they did. The same thing is, I think that's the movie theater, and they have vinyl going all across down there.
That's corrugated steel on the Kent Theater.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pole barn steel.
Okay.
Is that material that you just, that we passed around, is that vinyl?
I see.
Feels like corrugated.
Yeah, it didn't feel like vinyl.
It's got a coating on it.
Well, that's what I thought was steel with the edges taped up, so we didn't cut her.
But it's got a coating, it's not regular corrugated pole barn steel, there's a coating on it, but it's still barn steel.
So that's the best product that we can find that looks sharp, that is affordable and would cover up, so there aren't any problems with the brick completely crumbling and falling down. So we have been looking at different options, and that is the one, this is Hanson. Do you know of them? Yeah. So I'm sorry?
Yeah, I know them quite well.
Okay, so we have heard that they do an excellent job, and we were impressed, they said that they could do it before the snow flies, but I did not realize this was a process that's going to take a while, so.
Yes. So my question is cladding over the brick. Hey, so the brick is not structurally?
No.
Okay, so it's all just?
It's all just cosmetic.
Cosmetic, that's it?
Yep.
Okay. So you don't have to worry about if this gets cladded over, it's not going to continue to crumble underneath it?
Yeah.
Okay. All I need to know.
I'm kind of concerned saying that it's only cosmetic, it's a brick building. That structure is brick.
Mr. Mr. Conley, do you want my input at this point? I mean, I know this is kind of a traditional, because this is not a professional construction company up in front of you, but.
Well.
I just do, I do take the exception of Mr. Nixon's comments.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so go ahead, and then I want to, I'll allow this, and then I kind of want to get back to a structure here, so.
So, Mr. Nixon, I appreciate your question, I understand what you're asking. But you're speaking to the applicant who is not a professional builder, is not licensed, is not insured. To give her opinion about the structural safety of the cladding of a steel panel on a building. Neither am I, and last I checked, neither do you. So I think there's a question of concern, I believe she indicated that Rockford inspections drove past and gave their opinion about whether this is structurally safe or not. I don't know who they are, I don't know what their professional background is. Really, my strongest concern at this point is safety. And I'd like to see some kind of professional giving their opinion here, that matters more than my opinion, your opinion, or Ms. Galt's opinion. And then the board has to decide whether this, I don't know if we're calling it composite or vinyl or metal panels, would meet the requirements.
I'm in agreement, I wasn't sure what the internal structure of the building is, so.
We contacted the, it's Rockford inspection, and I, I think that's who you referred us to, like all of your building.
The city uses a company called Imperial Municipal Services?
Yes.
Is that who you're referring to?
That's who I'm referring to, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
Okay, so let me bring this back. Point of clarification, I interpreted Mr. Nixon's remarks as simply saying, thank you, I understand what you're saying now, not approving.
I apologize.
The other of this.
How I interpreted it.
So I, I didn't think that he was blank checking anything, so. That being said.
Well, then we can get a full report from Hanson's, like they met my husband, and I'm sorry you couldn't be here tonight, having a major plumbing issue in the Rockford building. So they gave us their insurance that they're going to get everything, and we can get a detailed report from them on what they're planning to do and how that they seal it, and so it won't be crumbling after they're finished.
I, I think, you know, personally, I'd like to see like a surveying report from somebody that does professional surveying of the building, just to make sure that indeed where you're saying, so the same mindset that Mr. Womack had is, I want to make sure the building is safe.
Yes.
That is strictly exterior, right?
Yep.
And if it is, great.
We'll get, okay, we'll get a report from Rockford.
Just want to make sure we have a very safe building downtown, and that, you're not going to have.
We do too.
Going to have us all back here going, okay.
Yeah, for sure.
And that's, it was in your PowerPoint, that you were saying that it was unsafe. So that's, it was very difficult, I think, for many of us to
Well.
understand how the building could be unsafe, yet made safe with some siding.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's miswording on our part, the Rockford, the same inspectors, go ahead.
Imperial Municipal Services, they would submit a report that you could give to us to say such is doable.
Yep.
And we, I think we would be all amenable to that.
We can get that, and then we can get a report from Hanson's.
I would almost think that we would want the inspection to be done by a structural engineer.
Yeah.
That's saying, that's going to give you the options of what you could put on the side to make that building safe. I mean, not from Hanson's. I mean, Hanson's going to say, well, you can throw this steel on the side, and it's safe.
Well.
I think we want a structural person to be telling us that.
That's.
And that's the inspector from Rockford, correct?
If they're structural.
Our building inspector.
Yeah, that's.
Building inspector.
Make one minor point, and that is, there's a potential conflict of interest for the IMS in this. So while I'm not discouraging her, IMS might be able to give her some other people she could go to. If IMS is working for the city, they would then be in position to have him to review the work of whoever it is that submitted the information. So she may end up having to go to some other group. I guess I'll speak with IMS about that.
Just to make sure there's not a conflict.
Sorry, I don't understand the conflict.
So she's proposing going to the city's.
Building inspector.
Inspector. Now, if they present if, if whoever does the inspection presents a report to us, and we, the city have questions, we are going to go to our building inspector.
Oh, so like second check the work that they did already, okay.
It's like using somebody else's lawyer in court, like you're suing somebody and you go and talk to the lawyer about representing.
All right, I get it.
And I want, I also want to clarify, we haven't addressed the, whether it's an appropriate style choice, because this wouldn't be allowed under the ordinances as I interpret them due to the amount of metal on the side of the building.
Well, I guess that's what I was looking at, that's why we took a picture of the backside of the brewery, because that is more than an accent. They have the whole backside and part of the side, so that's why we wanted to see, you know, apples to apples. You know, if we can, it's not going to be on the front, and we only, of course, we only have one side of the building, but for, to get this I mean, eyesore, how many years does it look like that? We have been taking off all the things that she put on side, she put on that awning, and that couldn't have been correct. There were side signs, there was all sorts of things, I mean, we really want this building look sharp. There's.
It looks good, you got to dig reach out.
Thank you.
And I don't interpret what I was saying, I don't, I don't speak for the plan commission, there's just one of me and there's seven votes here. I was merely wanting to point out that there's two issues here, one is, is it safe? The second issue is, would it be approvable by the planning commission?
Okay.
As for being in agreement with the ordinances that we have.
Okay.
So I didn't want to have a false impression that just by determining it's safe, we've given
Right.
the go on that.
Right.
That's all I was thinking. Any other comments?
So if this material, let's say, you say you don't like the material, do you have a list of materials you do like, or?
Well, the only thing I was saying is, from what I've seen from that small sample, that's corrugated barn steel. And as far as I knew, that was not an approvable material, correct?
Alright, so.
Throw that to Mr. Womack.
Everything is how you interpret it.
That is barn steel.
So I, I don't have the specific language in front of me, but you're right, the ordinance specifically says I just said I don't have the language.
Because what's on the Cedar Springs Brewing is not that at all.
All right, we can find out what it is.
That's not the same materials at all.
So there's, there are ways to interpret things, I mean, one of the ways that applicant and I discussed this issue was, okay, the ordinance says you can't have it be like a majority of the building. Well, does that mean a majority of one wall of the building, or does that mean the building as a whole?
Oh, and I'm not opposed to it, I mean, it's going to look better than what's there, don't get me wrong, it's going to look way better. I just want to make sure we're not like.
Like a side of the barn.
Yeah.
So when, what we looked at was.
Hey, I agree, the Kent Theater, I think the Kent Theater looks great, that was done before the zoning got changed. So the Kent Theater was done before they ruled that out, as far as I know.
Mr. Millington, you're correct, first of all, you can't judge future buildings based on what old building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah.
But the specific language says, other materials such as smooth faced or decorative concrete block drive it or prefabricated steel panels should only be used as accent and not dominate the building exterior of the structure. So in this instance, we're talking about two specific things, and that is, is what applicant has provided a prefabricated steel panel. And second, if they were to install the way they're proposing it, would that dominate the building exterior of the structure? Those are the two specific words and phrases we have to be concerned about in this.
In the front's not that.
I, no, nothing in the front will be that.
What about the, the secondary shed in the rear?
No, the shed in the rear does have, we were going to paint that, because there is red siding there, but we can pull that off if you want it off. The top part, we really need to get that new, if you see by those windows, but the garage, we can put up a different facade if you prefer, or I was going to paint it to match.
Speaking to is that it breaks that facade side up, so a majority of the one side, there is a transitional change.
Were, were you guys planning to carry that siding around the back, around the windows above the garage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not, it's not shown from, the only where you can see it is through the alley.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So we didn't feel like.
Concerned about the brick, if
For sure.
if you're going to call for that brick to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that all needs to be covered.
You know, one of the concerns we also address when it comes to some of the facade changes that we're looking at is, you know, I'm looking at that being a driveway, it looks like on that south side of the building, right?
Yeah, that belongs to the building to the south.
I know, but I'm just saying, if people are going to go through there, and one of our concerns was vehicles hitting buildings. Right, and the, and making sure that it still looked nice, so if we do that, I don't know if we so one, that's something that we as a group want to make sure you're aware of, is that maybe some way to block vehicles, and I don't know the answer to that, I'm just.
So the answer to that is no, because the driveway belongs to the next building.
Okay.
But what you might want to tell Ms. Galt is that, to create a little bit of, I guess, visual change and to address our concerns regarding steel panels being hit by cars and leaving it dent forever is that they have a material on the bottom, I think it's three or four foot. It's different in some kind of way, different color, different material, that's a little bit more resilient than metal panels.
Or easily replaceable if it does get damaged. That's the, the concern that we had beforehand, when we were talking about facades, was exactly that, a damaged building.
Okay.
Then it's next to impossible repair, especially if you got a steel sheet that goes the entire length of the building, because then to fix it, you got to replace that entire piece, right?
Right, that makes sense.
One of the things you may want to look at, see, I don't think we're going to prove this tonight, with the conversation we're having is that bottom half, you might want to take a look at it a way that, maybe the vehicle did hit it, how could it be easily replaced, or even a, something that sounded that's resistant to impact.
Maybe even like a four foot, and then a change, then a.
Yeah.
I'm going to take, I appreciate the free form discussion, I feel like we've got a lot of good ideas here, but the control freak here, I got to get the meeting back, so. Couple issues, so a member of the audience raised her hand earlier, and I will recognize her if she's part of your team, and she has something. And she has something to add to this.
Something to add.
But I, but I, I've had this happen before, we're so in the audience raise their hand, I thought they were with the applicant and they were someone opposed the applicant and I don't want that to happen. So if you're okay.
She belongs to me, I belong to her.
Okay. I I will, I will take it if you, if you are working with her.
Yeah, could you identify yourself, please?
Thank you.
My name is Megan Gault. My question was basically addressed already, it was with the theater having the same material that we presented. And it was grandfathered in, right? With the building, because it was made before the decisions that you made for materials.
The Kent Theater regarding that one?
So yes, uh we don't generally require people to change things, but. If the Kent Theater were to come to us tomorrow and say, we no longer wanna be a theater, we wanna be a whatever. We would go through the same process with them at that time. And they would propose something different, we'd say, well, you got all the steel panel here, you gotta do something.
Whenever there's a change of use that no longer fits the ordinances that are on the book at that time. Then that's something that has to be negotiated or fixed with the new app. That's why um while we appreciate and we love any improvement. We have to apply the ordinances that we have at the time, not just is it better than we had forty years ago when they put that thing up? So where we have some discretion in that, but we gotta also make sure we're not just doing it willy-nilly, because at some point. You know, that that could come back on us anyways, uh but thank you.
Yeah, that was my only question, so.
No problem.
Question from.
Then Mister Mister Nixon and then whoever else would like to speak after that.
Is there two different types of brick on the side of that?
Yeah, so my understanding, um just based on conversations with member of the members of the public. Uh is that there used to be a building that attached to that building on the lower portion. So the owners at that time either did something different or didn't finish it like they probably should have, because it was hidden. By an existing building, that then existing building was knocked over and now you see the exposed brick.
So. Where the exposed brick stops and just the concrete at the bottom.
Right.
Uh gray concrete.
So let's, let's be sure we're on the same page here, uh previous.
That's why you're.
Salt buying the building, I believe it was brick all the way down to the.
I thought it was.
It was.
And then uh the gults without seeking permission, uh hired somebody to spread some mortar on there. And they'll have to keep the brick in place.
Okay.
That was not approved of and I don't think it's very effective and does not meet the non-residential design requirements.
Well, just real quick, I, I wanted them to like to. Fill in the brick around it, I didn't want them to smear, and that's why there's a little bit of things that's there. And I'm not happy with that, so that's not what I was, that's not what we were going for. But we had a contractor that we've used before and never had a problem and this was a big problem, cause they made a mess. All the way across the street and yeah.
Mister Womack, would 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 a uh a business owner, a renter, a building owner? Need uh permit in order to fix an existing issue? If they were not adding anything to the structure other than just repairing what was there?
So normal repair, no, you don't need any permission to do that, but if the normal repair uh changes the. Look of the building, the aesthetics of the building or the structure of the building, then yes, you would.
So, so we could, but my point being, uh we could accept at face value that the, that the outfit didn't intend to change.
Oh, yeah, no, I I totally believe that portion of it.
And that a repair just did not work out as they anticipated.
Yeah, no, and I figured since we'd be addressing this today, I didn't wanna get into that.
I didn't, I didn't wanna cast aspersions either way, it was just, is what it is.
Well, yeah, and it looks like a hot mess, so I'm sorry.
Where you're trying to fix it, so.
Yeah.
We're happy for that.
That didn't go well.
I'm gonna recognize this camel, and if you wanna ask me a question there, right here, then I'll do it after that.
Um, I just wanna comment that I think that if it's bound to be structural. Um, that I think the way that the ordinance, I would read it that this would be allowed for the sides. I'm putting my two cents.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, the only thing I'd add is, uh it sounds like the board is leaning towards requiring the applicant to come back with some kind of. Evidence that the building is structurally sound. I'd like that to be somebody who has a license, a professional license, and not somebody's cousin Benny. Who says, yeah, looks good to me.
Yeah, to to me, it needs to stand up to a liability test of some sort, if that this person is certifying that it is safe, so that if anything in the future happens. That it falls on that person that.
Professional building inspector, professional architect, engineer, professional mason, maybe. Somebody who's gonna stand up and say, here's my licensure, I say it's structurally sound.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need a licensed inspector. I think licensed by state of Michigan, I'd be happy with that.
And that's what, when we made changes, we had to gut the building in Rockford. And the city, the inspectors, the building inspectors from Rockford, whom it sounds like you use, I would prefer to use them. I mean, they were, they're not giving anybody any favors, so they were, so I would, if it's okay, cause I don't. I don't really, we don't, we haven't used anybody besides the city inspectors, so. Is that who we can use?
Mentioned that's a possible conflict of interest. Now, something that she could do is go to the city of Rockford and say, hey, who do you guys use for building inspection? And then use those people.
I guess I misunderstood, cause that's who we would use, though who Rock, the city of Rockford uses.
Who does the city of Rock?
Thank you. So you saved me, yes.
Same one that we use, yeah, the problem is we use the same people.
Okay, so like if we had a question on the report to say like, is this actually true, this doesn't really make any sense. We would then go to our city inspector, who is the same person.
Now I got it, thank you, alright, so I'll ask them.
So if you can get a referral from them of who they trust, then we can second check the work if we need to.
For sure, alright, I'll do that and then I need a more detailed report from Hanson's, is that correct?
I think we just need a.
I don't think we need anything from Hanson's, Hanson seems confident in their ability to install.
There's just the facade concerns.
Safety issue first, and then this board seems willing to accept this, maybe not on the bottom three or four foot.
That's my like.
Applicant may want to bring back a second uh plan, which shows essentially what they proposed on the top half. And some other alternative material on the bottom three or four.
Three to four foot, okay.
Which is a car might hit.
Yeah, which is a more durable material.
Okay.
Or easier replaceable.
Maybe like a brick.
Get out of here.
Try my best, try my best.
Did we answer all your questions?
You sure did, yeah, so I'll work on the report, I just need one report about the structure, is that correct?
It just says it's structurally sound, I think our.
A qualified person is to attest that this is structurally sound and that.
Outside brick.
Yes.
Yes. Alright.
And by doing the wrapping that it's gonna maintain safe, you know, by putting. Panels, it's gonna protect it from rain.
That's a good point, one of the, so I spoke with Mister Allington um next door, who's doing a similar project right now. Um, and he indicated part of the issue is water's getting back behind the brick.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I'd like to see an opinion that also addresses the water issue.
You gotta make sure that the installer where that metal, what panel gets used where it meets the roof line, that it's capped. You know how those roofs got that peak and that goes down to the roof, that it's all sealed, so water's not getting.
They.
Saw something in your presentation.
Yes, it's all in the, yeah, the report.
That cap's important.
Yeah, Hanson's is, they've been doing this a long time and we talked about that.
New capping, I'm seeing, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we love the work, don't get me wrong, the building's looking great, so.
Yeah, so we're just trying to keep in budget so we can finish the project, so, but I will get that, do I, do I give that report to you?
Uh, yeah, give it to me to at least seven days prior to their next meeting.
Okay.
Mister Conley, do you feel like you need a motion on this, or do you think the applicant has sufficient information?
Well, I. Do we, do we need to? We need to table this until next month, because this is, this is a.
Lot of moving parts to it, yeah.
There's not, it doesn't sound like the board wants to approve it.
Right, so and it it's it's an active item in front of us, so I feel like we should table it, bring it back.
I'll make a motion to table it and do it for their.
Seconded.
Uh, any discussion, you had your end.
Do we need to um also mention about color choices? That she might be using and bringing that back next month?
I believe, if I'm right, that's the color choice.
Is the color, okay.
Has the brown and just a little bit of speckle.
Okay.
But they've guaranteed me, cause I was worried about denting, we don't want it to look used or, and they said, you know. Hail storms, this is not gonna dent, it's not gonna wear.
This is heavier material than most.
I just wanted to double check.
We wanted to make sure. Well, and we wanted to make sure that matched the front, and then once that's up, if it looks too dark from the front to the side. We'll change that front facade, cause we want them, we don't want it to look too dark.
So I I believe you have one more of your, your other team member there wants another, another point, and then we'll wrap this up.
So the material we have here is approved, correct, or not necessarily approved.
I think we've addressed it one way or the other.
That's, oh, okay, okay, cause I was thinking, because you said that seems like the material used at the theater, correct?
No, we're, well, we're not weighing it against the theater.
Oh, okay.
The other, um, we're checking to make sure the building's safe and then. Then if you come back and we have something in hand, we'll make a determination, we have an idea, kind of vote one way or the other on that.
Oh, okay.
I I think the board is leaning towards saying it's approvable.
Yeah, no, exactly.
But it's also gonna be determinative upon what other material you recommend for the bottom three feet and some other issue.
Yep, with, I'm hoping that Hanson's can, I just, I like the company and I like. The material, so I wanted to see, first I'll see if they can do something, but if it's, if it will damage with the car, we'll definitely look at something else.
Well, and it's not really about the damo- damages, about easy being replaceable.
Yes.
So at the bottom three foot, if there's a break in a trim piece, if something hits it, you're only replacing a three foot piece, not a thirty-five foot piece.
A big difference in price.
It's easily fixable.
Right, as of a heading.
Yeah, it'd be good for you in the long run.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mister Conley, did you?
You have to vote.
I, we're about to.
Wanna make sure.
Okay, so any other discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this until next month?
Alright.
I, all opposed? Motion is taped, or the the matter is taped. Other business. Um, uh, we, yeah, we had nineteen minutes, so, but most of these are little, so. A motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one oh one. Uh, to establish the regular meeting dates of the planning commission for uh calendar year twenty twenty-two. Um, I see that there's some potential issues on the calendar we have in front of us, uh this is on page. One fifty, and Mister Womack pointed out to us that these could be potential issue dates. The highlighted ones, I believe, are April fifth and July fifth. Of course, um April fifth would be when Cedar Springs and most public schools are up on the spring breaks. And we traditionally have a very difficult time getting a quorum when spring break is going. And also uh July, having a meeting right before the, or right after the fourth of July could also be an issue.
Using that. This is a joint.
Everything, six, oh, mine's a third.
I'm sorry?
This is for the record, it's a joint effort between myself and.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to pass any spurs or spikes, I just got the the um.
Email from me.
The email from the. Obviously, we all know.
Honestly, I have no idea.
That's all the real work is put together, my name is Johnson, so.
Now, that is true.
So should we just push those two dates one week beyond that?
They can be moved either way, it doesn't, you know.
Yeah.
Just establish this calendar now.
Yeah.
When it gets close, it can be moved.
Cause I know the fifth of A- April, I won't be in town, we're always gone for spring.
I, yeah, I would move that out to April twelve, if it was, if it was up to me, as long as there's no other considerations that. Cause I don't know the election schedule and all that other stuff, I don't think there's one in April.
My desperate hope is that uh we will actually skip some meetings next year. Lack of agenda items.
That happens?
Hasn't in a while, has it?
Used to, used to have a lot, not anymore. Um, and then, does uh July twelfth also work if we move off July fifth?
I might have a conflict, I usually take a week and a half, right, or so, I mean, if it's me missing a meeting, don't hold it up on me.
Is it, I anticipate a lot of people might miss a right that close to the fourth, but would there be? Uh, less of a chance that we couldn't get a quorum on the twelfth?
Much less of a chance.
Yeah. So are there any other dates that are problematic for people? That we, that would be, all of us are saying it's a problem, or many of us are saying it's a problem. Um, so, this is a motion, so um.
I do have one uh conflict with June seventh. I'll be out of town.
Okay, we have multiple conflicts on June seventh, does anyone else think that that's a. They get for C in their crystal ball, but they might also be out of town.
That I see.
Anyone traveling, Mister McGrath?
Yes, depends where he's going.
Alright, so if it's, if it's just one, then we probably will keep it the way it is.
I would say, I'd make a motion to approve that. Uh, to provision twenty twenty-one. Dash, a resolution to establish the regular meeting date for the planning commission from January twenty-two to December twenty-two.
Mister Hall, does that include the pushing back of April fifth to the twelfth and July fifth?
Either way, it is.
Wait a second.
It's like a family, you ain't gonna get everybody here at once anyway.
We're all here, Mister Hall. Right now, we're all here.
I would push the two dates.
Yeah, I think I'd push those two dates.
Okay, switch to days.
So you're amending your motion, Mister Hall?
Yes.
Amending to the twelfth of each day, each month.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion as amended, you signify with aye.
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 All opposed? Harry's. Next item, uh motion recommended city council to adopt the twenty twenty-one bylaw revisions as presented.
We tr- we keep trying to make this perfect.
Well, never.
It's not gonna be.
To be possible.
It's, yeah, it's not possibly perfect.
So I can go through the changes if you want, I think they're all pretty reasonable. You know, the the methodology by which we go through the agenda each month. It seems like we always get a curveball thrown at us, I think you did a good job, I appreciate that. Other than that, things are. Recommended, that's how they reflect in reality.
My big concern is that we got the old business or other business. Out from in between a hearing and a site, and we did that. We're never gonna get one hundred percent perfect for every meeting, but at least we're not doing this stuff right now in between.
Yeah.
We were doing that stuff before.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and this belongs at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
You guys don't have any concerns about the city manager adjourning all of your meetings, saying it's inclement weather out there?
I usually know, wear a crown and bring a scepter, I guess we're good.
I'm good with that.
A really big one.
What's it saying there about planning commissioner being able to start the meeting back up again? I'm sure that I, there is some ability to do that, right? Okay, any other things we need to discuss on this, or any questions before we vote on it? Before we actually put the motion out, cause I don't think we.
I do see one error on one, on page one fifty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, the clerk's last name has changed.
That's how long we've been kicking this can down the road.
Jeez.
Changed it and then we came back and changed it again, didn't we?
Her last name or the bylaws?
The bylaws, thank you for that clarification.
It appears that you guys added it in twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, and now.
Okay.
There is a list of amendments on the bottom of page one fifty-seven. So I guess I would ask that we change the clerk's last name to reflect.
Do we need to add the last? Do we need to add the last name to the motion?
Oh, I'm kidding.
Okay, we're just making sure. I don't know how officially going to be. I'll make a motion to approve this.
I I think the motion is to send to the.
Recommend. I'll recommend to send to the city.
Council.
To city council for approval. Yes.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um.
Yes, you guys want to spend an hour on fences?
No.
This is a trick question.
This is the perpetually moving item.
I I feel like we got actually a lot accomplished at the last meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so.
And I appreciate that all the work you guys did. Uh, your homework assignment over the last month was to look at some of the homes that are either in a position of potentially taking advantage of this or who have already taken advantage of this. Um, I will apologize. I did send out an email indicating that I had evidence of any of those homes having received permission to do that. Um, I did receive at least some permission from one of the homes in the game that they had some permission. I I don't want to delve into the whether it was legal permission or whatever. But, you know, it it's kind of a hodgepodge. This city has either had strange laws or no laws or no enforcement of the laws. So I'd like to enforce the laws. I like to have good laws to enforce. So um, I I guess I'd ask that we table this.
Yes.
But I I would like to hear very minimally uh, whether the board members had the opportunity to go out and look at the community and see how these changes might, you know, affect the community.
Um. I've seen a lot of houses that are on the corners with the fences and I don't actually mind them. I think they're totally fine as long as they're kept up like any other fence. Um, one thing that I would point out is just how close it is to the sidewalk can kind of be annoying in some places, especially for the grass. Um. Like the upkeep on that side in terms of like weed whacking and whatever, but that was my only comment. I didn't actually mind if it was like on part of the side of the house or all the way on the side of the house. I thought it was fine as long as it was a fence that was up.
Where? Um, I looked around to live in the same neighborhood, so I saw the same fences. I do know in the winter time, the sidewalk by the fence that are too close, like there's no room to walk with the snowbanks and a dog. But my my guess, my question is unless those fences are torn down and they need to rebuild, there's no way for us to address those issues, right?
So similar to the other grandfathered issues, I don't know if those ever received permission. I'm not going to dig through thirty years worth of paper to find out. Um, but what we can do is address future friends.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um, and it's interesting you bring up the snow because I I've never actually thought of that. Um, whenever I think of this type of stuff, I think of primarily two things, and that is kid riding his bike falls off his bike and goes headfirst into a fence uh, or grass um, that doesn't get cut because it's too narrow or too whatever. Um, so that's an interesting uh, thing that you brought up, and I appreciate that. So something.
Snow, so I would.
I walk him every day.
Yep.
I I think I haven't read this recently, but I think in the ordinance, it says that a fence has to be a minimum of like one foot off of the sidewalk or the right away. We could increase that to two feet and or three feet or five feet, whatever you guys want to do, uh, that might help address that issue.
No, I drove around a little bit and I didn't drive into your guys' neighborhood, but I went out the ones over off from seventeen or Muskegon Street there. And, you know, you got the one on the corner, or they got both sides of their yard fenced in. You know?
I don't know what Charles was talking about.
Oh, geez, I had to pull pull up your notes, but it's the house that faces is a Fifth Street. Was that the one that you gave the example of? I'm not great on the road.
There's an individual on the northeast, no, sorry, northwest corner of Fifth and Muskegon.
Yeah.
Um, they their house faces Muskegon, but their side side yard.
Yeah.
Fifth Street.
Yeah.
They're actually the impetus for this because they wanted to put up a privacy fence to block there's their their rear yard from the semi truck traffic that goes up and down Main Street.
Yeah.
That's right.
From Fifth Street from, yeah.
Of course, anybody who's been in a semi truck, no six foot fence.
Does nothing.
You from seeing into the backyard or like or whatever.
Yeah, and I was even thinking about the house across the street to the east that's got the pole barn fence.
Yeah, so that's.
That's front yard, right?
It it's in their side yard.
Okay.
On the east side of that road, even though I really don't like the fence material, except I think it's a pole barn steel. Previous to that, it was a tarp.
Yep.
Uh, they've had some issues there.
Yep.
But it is behind the front facade of the house, therefore it's the side yard.
Okay. I would call the front, but yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess there are small rules there that.
darn rules.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, comments? Not making decisions. I'm just curious.
Okay. Um. It, do we need to table this again, or is this just a discussion?
I mean, it doesn't have a motion or discussion. Uh, I'll treat it as discussion if you will.
Yeah, let's just say it's a continuing discussion. We'll bring it back when Mr. Womack wants to bring it back to us again. Um, then, uh, item D, uh, there's a discussion on single family residential uses in the R two and R three zoning and the possibility of rezoning those areas.
Yeah, so this kind of was an interesting thing that came up just a day or two before your agenda went out, so I didn't get a ton of time to work on it. But, and I apologize, we probably should have addressed this previously with Mr. Johnson when we did the re-vamp in what, twenty twenty? Um, but you have the uh neighborhood, the Prairie Run neighborhood, which is always, as long as I've been here, um, R two, R three. Now, what I suspect probably happened is the original developer said, hey, we'd like to put as many houses on this property as possible, similar to what Alan Edwin just said with the new neighborhood. But at the time, instead of going for a P U D, which would have allowed them to have six foot side yards, then planner or then planning commission said, you know what, we'll just make you R two or R three, which automatically gives you a six foot side yard. That's what I suspect happened. Now, the problem is if one of these homeowners, property owners says to the city, well, I'd like to either convert my house or knock my house over and put up a duplex or a or quadplex or an eightplex. We'd be legally obligated under zoning to allow them to do that. Now, to convert a single family home to a duplex or a quadplex, there are some requirements they'd have to meet. But to quadruple the amount of rental income you can come up with, there's somebody who would do that. Now, I think the Prairie Run neighborhood people anticipated living next to a quadplex. Uh, but under the way the rules are right now, they'd be able to. So the easiest way to solve this issue is most of those properties, uh, we would just make R one. If not all of them. I I take that back. I'm now looking at needlewood, which is interesting. So needlewood actually has duplexes.
Yeah.
I I thought that was interesting as well.
But it's an R one property, and I'm not familiar with when that was approved, whether they had a P U D or not.
Needlewood has a P U D.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe they had a P U D to put duplexes there.
They did.
But we could solve the Prairie Run issue by converting that to R one, because as far as I know, none of those houses are duplexes or anything else.
They're all single family, as far as I know.
The only real issue that I could foresee is, okay, you're taking homes approved under R two, R three, which probably have six foot side setbacks. Now you're imposing R one standards, which require ten foot side backs, no setbacks. Meaning you could no longer expand into the building envelope. Which is not really a problem. If your house burns down, now you can't occupy the same footprint that you had previously. You'd have to lose potentially four feet on each side. But that's an extreme example. I don't anticipate it happening much if at all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would we do, I know you're going to hate this. Um, could we change it to R one while simultaneously putting in a P U D to allow them to keep the six foot?
Uh, we can't uh impose a P U D.
They have to request.
The applicant has to ask for the P U D. Um, now, you could, I guess theoretically, ask the city council for a budget to hire an attorney to apply on behalf of the Prairie Run neighborhood for a P U V. But I don't anticipate the city council approving. Uh, there may be a way to solve that issue. I haven't researched. But for the time being, we're just talking about rezoning. So uh, the other issue are the neighborhoods between Cherry and Muskegon, Fifth to, what is that? West Street North, you know, there's no road there. Uh, those are also R two, R three. Um, I know that um, at least one member of the audience lives in that area and has previously indicated that they thought it was an odd zoning. And I believe that that time I said to them, I'll get your neighbors to approach the city and maybe we can resume. Well, if we're going to be doing Prairie Run, maybe we now address this as well. I I'm not aware of any duplexes or or multifamily in that area.
No, but but two other.
I was just gonna say, I didn't catch that. It was the Prairie Run, so I don't, I don't know how much I can have an opinion on this.
You're a citizen and a board member. You have the rights to express your opinions.
But um, there's there's two of us here also that would live in that area bordered by Fifth Street and and Cherry Street.
Yeah, that's what that's what I had in my head.
That.
If your concern is whether you can express your opinion or rule on this or whether you'd be excluded based on the fact that it affects you.
Yes.
It it should not exclude you, even though it affects you, if it affects everybody else the same way. We're not doing you a special favor. We're not doing anybody in these. If it affects your neighbors generally the same way it affects you.
I was expressing solidarity with him as Hamel, that you're not the only one in this boat, because I can think of at least two other people here that I know also have an R two or R three zone.
Okay, all right.
Um, I know that top of is that in that seventh, South Seventh, there's Church Street. There is multi families there, so.
Yeah, so there are a few in that area and we could do a little bit better job of kind of sussing those out.
Singing it out.
Okay.
Maybe putting those into the news district or something different. This was just a real quick and dirty.
Well, I know that you were talking about the Fifth Street area and that being the R two or whatever, and I was just reminding you about those those places over there that that's the reason they're there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and then there's also a section on the south end of town primarily uh, based around Sixth Street South of this is pair here. Then there is also Seventh Street South appear. And again, I'm not familiar with any multifamily or duplexes in that area either. Ironically enough, every duplex and the quadplex we seem to have exists in the R one.
I thought we're.
That's amazing.
And where uh, Sixth Street and all that ended was Wolverine or Display Pack.
Uh, that's in the gray area to the further south, which was industrially zoned, and that's appropriate.
Oh, that's furthers. Okay, I was thinking it was further up because there's some houses that.
Yeah, so there are some houses that um, what West Street? Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure on those. I know that a couple of them might be group homes or something to that effect.
Yeah, hope is there.
But I don't think that's affected by any type of local zoning. There's some pretty strict state law requirements there. Primarily what I'm talking about is the homes on South Sixth Street.
Right, that's what I was saying. They.
Which are all single family as far as I'm aware.
Yeah.
So.
Is there vacant lots back there, though, where somebody could build a duplex or no?
Not that I'm aware of. There are some large lots back there, but I'm pretty sure they all have single family homes on.
Most.
I would just hate to rezone something that's got vacant land on it where somebody might want to build a duplex, you know?
Majority of all these are all built out in the potential of them being vacant lot in there, but.
Yeah.
Build a nun.
No.
It's like we're overreacting to.
There are some properties in Prairie Run, though, that have like three acres connected to them that are like in between the builds and stuff.
Sure, they have single family homes built on them over.
Yep.
Yeah.
Really, what you're talking about is floodplain that just happened to be a long time ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, one thing I did not include here is the area surrounding South Street uh, because there are a few duplexes there, and I believe there is one multifamily. So I guess my question for the board, is this something that you're interested in pursuing that I should put more work into?
I wouldn't put it in top of your fires burning bright, but it looks like something we have to address.
It's something that was brought to me partially by the code enforcement officer, um, because of our concerns of it's a new world, a new economy, and we don't want somebody buying up a bunch of houses in Prairie Run and turning them into quadplexes where we got eighteen people living.
I mean, it would make a lot of sense for that element for sure, because that was billed as a single family.
Okay, let's not give people ideas.
You know, yeah, well, that's why we got to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe fires burning bright.
Yeah, I think Prairie Run should definitely be R one.
That's well, I I've been given permission to give my opinion and that would.
But like by by West Street, though, I mean, there's vacant property there.
Let's go.
We start right next.
I wouldn't want to change that zoning.
And then I'll build on my property.
So uh, let's, yeah, let it's nine oh four. Let's let's wrap this up then unless you have something. We're going to bring this back.
I guess the only thing I'd say is your homework between now and the next meeting is look at these areas and try to identify any properties that should not be rezoned or reason that they either already have multifamily or they're undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
Or some other reason.
Okay.
But as far as I'm aware, apart from that little area around church, um, I think every other parcel is a single family.
Noted.
I'd be happy to be proved wrong.
Challenge accepted.
Uh, item eleven, open discussion of issues not on the agenda. We have some correspondence. Uh, you wanted to tell us about there, Mr. Womack?
Sure, House Bill four seven two two, uh. This is the state legislature doing the stupid things that the state legislature does. Um, it's been back in front of them probably seven or eight. They finally, for whatever idiotic reason, decide to approve of it in the House. Um, Mr. Heisinga, who was our representative until a couple days ago, he voted in favor of it. I don't understand why. He is now our illustrious uh, state senator.
Vote for it again.
So I don't know if he can vote for it again. Um, but if you happen to know anybody that you can shake a tree on, uh, this is in no way good for the city. Um, you can see it as a neutral, but from the city's perspective, this is all bad.
I don't know. I can rent out in my garage.
I can rent out my house for red flame today.
From. Individuals perspective, it might be good. From the city's perspective, it is all bad. And that's why. Because what they're essentially doing is saying cities can no longer determine whether short term rentals are considered a appropriate use of property.
Right.
Now, in this city, we have not made that determination, and we would allow that. But the state coming in and telling us what we can and can't do is never good for the city.
This eliminates like what Ben Rapids does with like limited use of those, right? Because I know they give a limited number permits that are, is that eliminate that? Is that what the concern is?
Yes, and really this is going after beachfront communities. Um, because if you drop a camper in your backyard and then rent it out for two hundred bucks a night and allow people to party and drink and piss on the front lawn, that might make your neighbors angry. But under this law, we can no longer do anything about that. We can leave the city and no longer protect our citizens who live here.
I mean, I don't think we'll see it a lot here. Like you say, it's probably the lakefront.
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
The reason I ask is I'm an avid, I don't use hotels. Usually I got a big, I got six in my house, so I get to rent two rooms. I usually get a Verbo or an Airbnb and I I've always had a good experience.
And for for you as an individual, great.
Yeah.
From the city.
I get that. It's an enforcement issue for the city. Yeah, it can be a nightmare. I get that.
It feels analogous to me to the to the lovely fireworks law that we have, that we oh, that the state decided we had no.
Can't talk about that.
So.
Dispatch those days.
Just a small, just small enough government to tell us what to do.
Be used to it.
So, all right, uh, twenty twenty one calendar, that's just letting us know what's.
Just information for this year.
For the for this year and the in the um the the Zoom links, right? Okay, and then ordinance two two five.
That was directed at any person on this board who is or might be on the city council. Um, we do allow one city council member to serve on this board, which is a change. If that person finds that she has enough time, I'm sorry, if that person finds in their lives. They theoretically could serve on both boards. Otherwise, they may wanna submit a letter of resignation.
Okay, so a question on that. My term ends in December, correct?
So that would mean that you would be on the city council until the December, or sorry, the planning commission until the December meeting. Where then at the December council meeting, a replacement would be made.
Okay.
Or a vacant seat.
Okay, yes. So when, when does the city need to know then? Cause I would.
You can make it effective a certain date. Would like to resign effective December fifteenth or twelfth or.
Okay.
You don't listen to the devil on your left shoulder.
Cause the next term, the planning commission term, if I get appointed, is another three years, right? Which is a lot, you guys.
Hey, if you're taking Jerry's place on the council, you're taking his place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Over here.
I mean, I did put signs up for you, so.
We do have.
He's pulling that out and it's been like a week.
Oh, really?
Just saying.
Two people.
Laced around the Red Bird.
There's two people who want to sit on the board?
Yeah, I'm only aware of one, but.
Oh.
I have one in the wings, but.
Oh, yeah, I know who you're talking about.
So.
That's a dude though.
There's some musical chairs that have to happen.
We have potentially two.
And that, once the musical chairs stop and everyone's decided what position they're going to be in, then we'll, it'll fall down to planning commission after that.
Yep.
So, um, staff comment, city manager, back to you.
I'm hungry, let's go home.
Yeah. Hey, city clerk.
Jimmy Jones, anyone? To clarify, Jerry has one more meeting on the planning commission.
Okay.
Yay, term ends in twenty twenty-one.
Quick comment before, before we leave, Mr. Womack, are you gonna confirm that that piece of metal?
You have to ask the chair to.
Oh.
See the planning members.
We gotta, yeah, cause we're not done. Yeah.
Plague vision members.
I just wanna confirm before we all leave that that piece of metal right there is not approvable by the zoning right now. Correct?
That's your interpretation.
Corrugated steel. I'm not saying I don't like it.
I think it is, cause it didn't, it said it can like take over the building or whatever, and I don't think it does.
I've been told that corrugated metal is not, does not mean approval.
The ordinance, which I read to you, not to rehash the issue, says that what corrugated steel metal shall not dominate.
Okay.
That was my. That whole side being covered was dominate.
Yeah, I'm not saying it would look good. I just wanna make sure we're not approving something that's out of.
But it doesn't say dominate a side of a building. It says the building, which means the whole one hundred percent of the building, which it does not.
We're gonna get another crack at this?
Yeah.
And with the app getting in front of us rather than doing.
Oh, no, I'm saying, I don't care. I just wanna make sure that we all.
Mr. McGrath, I just had a suggestion for our agenda, since a lot of times we're scrolling through hundreds of pages. Is maybe perhaps putting a page number on the agenda item where it can be found.
I've, I've tried to do that in the past. It's a lot of extra work for me and, um. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that there's a function on your PDF reader that will actually bring up each individual agenda item. So when you look at the agenda, it says item eight, you know, B. There is a bookmark that you.
Wait, where?
Well, I would have loved to know that like a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry, everybody older than the age of forty.
If you remind the. I normally write them for that reason and I forget to tell you sometimes. So if you ask me where.
I was, I was clicking back and forth on those two to find it, especially when it.
I see that now. Wow, that would be really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Oh, I'm feeling really stupid right now.
I'll have to find it for you guys and then I'll go to class next time to show you exactly how to do it.
Okay.
Or hit control.
So.
I don't like my choices.
Any other planning commission members have any comments?
I'm hungry.
I don't wanna get yelled at again.
Okay, real quick, real quick from this blank mission member, Ashley, congratulations.
Thank you.
You know not what you did, but congratulations anyway. And congratulations in, in an opposite way to Mr. Hall for not having to do it anymore. Congratulations. And, um, I'm gonna ask the city manager, um, with all the things on your plate, including acting as a city planner. Um, where are we beginning a city planner?
Well, I've reached out to a few other communities to see who they use. Um, I actually had discussions with Ms. Hendrick to see if she was. But we'll discuss that some other time if you'd like. You know, I go back and forth on this. I've done so much planning and zoning over the last couple of years. I feel qualified to do this. The issue isn't whether I can do this for you. The question is whether I can do this and the rest of my job. So part of the internal discussion and with city council is whether, uh, it'd be better to hire a planning consultant. Uh, or for me to hire an assistant city manager. So if I hire an assistant city manager, I could dedicate more time to staffing this board. And operating as your planning consultant, while simultaneously having an additional staff person who can assist me with city tasks. Um, really the. What probably I should do, I'm admitting this, even though I don't have time to do it. Speak with various planning consultants and say, hey, look, I don't want you to come to every meeting, cause I don't need you at every meeting. But when I have a hundred and ten home neighborhood P U D that comes to me, I'd like to hire you to give me a report on that only. Cause that's really what I need them for. This, you know, marijuana business type stuff, easy. The, I wanna put a fast food restaurant here, that's pretty easy. The hundred and ten homes, that's hard. So, uh, probably what I need to do is get together a list, make some phone calls and then bring back whatever proposals they have.
Um, ultimately, obviously, what you, what you do is a, a function of what you and what the city council decide. I'm gonna come down with, um, my opinion is that it's helpful to have two voices. Not that you didn't do a great job on this. That has nothing to do with it. It's, it's helpful to get outside opinions on some of these things. Um, so. Be that what it may, it's not my decision to make. Uh, there is no report of the bank consultant unless you wanna pick up that role. And then in that case, oh wait, I jumped over the city council representative. Who wants it?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. There you go.
Hall is not on the city council. We have two members of city council here.
Me, I think you skipped the city.
No. I was.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
She's not sworn in. He said something, so I got something from the, and then I don't need anything to adjourn, so I just adjourn.
Oh, you're good, you're good.